Hey, welcome everybody at seven oh two, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. So I want to go ahead and start the meeting. We have people here at the town hall and we have people on Zoom. This is the public hearing, the second public hearing on the zoning law. And since the last public hearing, we made a number of editorial changes and tweaks. We changed a few items in the use table and we we changed one of the districts. We one of the Hamlet districts to add rule. So those are not major changes, but we thought it was would be prudent to have another public hearing in light of of the changes. So. The.
Do I have to start with the pledge of allegiance for public?
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry.
So so I. The the public hearing, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you have additional comments, you know, you can submit those as written comments. I we have a timer in Zoom land who will let you know when you're at two minutes and thirty seconds, just to so you can prepare your closing comments in a graceful way. And if you're here at the town hall, please sign up on the sheet at the podium. If you're in Zoom land, raise your zoom hand and that will queue you in Zoom land. And Velvet like is clerking for us tonight and she will let me know who's who's ready to speak from Zoom, so.
Yeah, okay, proceed to question mark.
What's that?
What's the deadline for submitting written comment?
Well, we actually made it four P M. today. But if you if you don't finish your comments tonight and, you know, then we'll accept the, you know, the written thing. So. All right, with that, I will check the list. And.
The base of the audio is glitching.
It's what?
Glitching in and out.
Oh, wow. Let me. Can you can you hear us, Velvet?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Has it has it been good?
Yeah, it's been fine.
I got it too, Renee too.
Right, I got it from Renee, but. So everybody else, anybody else having problems?
Did you get it from?
Renee.
Oh, maybe it's sister earth.
Yeah, it seems to be working.
It's been fine on my end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, okay. We will proceed and so we have Matt Mix who wishes to speak.
I do, but could I listen to comments from other people who speak later in the meeting? Um, why don't we go first?
You should go first because your hand is up and I don't have any other hands up.
Well, I'll make this simple. We all know the way I feel about zone. It will not affect me in any way, form, shape or size. It's not going to do a thing to me. I'm done wanting to do anything in this town. My children may have an effect from it, but most likely that will have grandchildren in this town, which we're thinking. And this will cause them a major pain in the neck. And it probably going to have to have some changes made because you guys refuse to do them now. On the other side of that, it's been said to me that we're going to put zoning in. People are going to deal with it and they're going to get used to it. And that was said by a person at this table. And that was a year and a half ago. You're fixated on doing this. Hell or high water. And to me, you should have done it small. You should have started it easy and done a few things first. You've done the whole thing to once. I personally have no use for the whole thing. There are a few pieces that I can agree with. But you're in charge, I'm not. I have a few suggestions. You can take the zoning and put it somewhere, but you may have to remove your heads first because you're not listening to us as taxpayers and people. And I don't like it. I ask questions, I get answers that mean nothing. We decided this, it doesn't matter. That's not the way you do this. Use numbers, use statistics, justify what needs to be done and why. And then listen to people's comments, why certain things may not work. You haven't done any of that in this whole process. So I'm going on record for the final time to say no to zoning in this form, period. You're going to vote it in and we're going to deal with it because that's what you told us we're going to have to do. So enjoy yourself, take your pat on the back because other issues this board brings up, I will be here and I will ask questions. And if I get answers like the ones that I have had, you're going to hear from me and I'm not going to be nice, not going to be polite, and I will be loud.
Three seconds.
So. I'm out of here. I got other things I gotta do. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Matt. Good night, I'm sorry you feel that way. All right, I will call on anyone else who wish to speak. I'm going to check the list again. I haven't seen anyone sign up, but. Well.
No Zoom land hands up?
Nope, there are no Zoom land hands up. If you wish to speak, you should raise your zoom hand. If not, that's that's fine, too. All right, well, I will now close the public hearing and thank people for attending. I had anticipated a little longer public hearing, as some of you may know. So I will have to calibrate a bit, but I do think we do have. I will tell people here for the public hearing that we, as you've probably seen on the agenda, the board will be discussing the zoning law later. And then we'll make a decision on whether we wish to move forward the resolution to to adopt tonight. So with that, I did invite several people who put their names forward to serve on the town's review board to speak with us tonight, who are interested in public opposition on that board.
As the official town board meeting be done now.
Oh, yeah, it has, you're right, I should have.
Fledge.
Thank you for that process note. I did close the public hearing. So I will now open the town board meeting for tonight and ask if there's anyone who wishes to address the board.
Fledge, we did the pledge.
Oh, the fledge, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with its chance, liberty and our God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
And now I will ask if anyone wishes to speak to the board. I see that game camera just joined the meeting. I don't think they're all. Okay, so. I don't see anyone for privilege of the floor. So now we'll move forward to the review board interviews. That's okay. And we'll we'll probably do one now and a couple later or a couple now and one later, I think so. So with that.
This this is because you anticipated doing this a little bit later.
I did, yeah, I did, okay, so. But I I think everybody's okay with moving forward with that.
Yep.
That right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So I did want to, you know, preface this, I don't, I don't, I think everybody is aware of the importance of the review board. They administer the regulations that are contained within the zoning law. They will be, as they do now, they administer site plan review for any applications for special use permits. They would administer that, so it's a really important board and. But yeah. So with that, I will ask Jack O'Reilly, who's here at the town hall with us. Thank you for joining us tonight and so welcome. If you just tell us a little bit about yourself and and you're interested in serving on the review board.
Yeah, so I guess the first and more most important thing is this is my wife Erin and she and I live down the street, just across from the dandy at two six nine five. We've lived here here for the last like year and a half, but we lived in Boysville for a year and a half before. So we've been in two of the three big Hamlets, which I know the thing.
Wow.
Reading, but I think what the long story short about me is I have a degree in history from Clemson. I have a degree and a master's in education from Istica College. And that's why we moved here to this region in the first place was to go to I C. And really just liked it here and wanted to move here. We like the big open spaces. I Erin can tell you that when I was in Scotland, I kept calling and saying, it looks just like like Boyce, it's just like Slaterville. Like, why does Scotland look so similar? And it's because we're on the same longitude and the lines, like it's just a beautiful place, you know, that we live in. And I find it interesting that I've arrived at a time in which there's so much strife about public policy. And like, it's kind of an experience, like a moment to actually be a policy wonk instead of just some guy that reads the Times and complains about, you know, things that I read on the internet. Like, it's a chance to actually be involved in your community and help structure in a way that makes sense going forward for the next over many decades that these things continue on. And I personally feel like I have a capability to do it, like I can read big documents, I can pay attention to these things for a long period of time. It's something I'm interested in and willing to take on, so. I think that's my my long story short about it, you know, I just think it's an important civic thing to do and something I find interesting and important.
Cool. And so you've been following the zoning and have you have you had a chance to peruse like the comprehensive plan?
So I read, I I won't say I've read every word of it, but I've, you know, read the relevant passages, skimmed through the majority of it. And I I don't want Pete to not come over for beer anymore, but I liked the comprehensive. Like, I I I think that it makes a lot. I know, I know, I know, but I buy the beer, Pete, and I think that should be important. So I bring your own beer if you don't like zoning, but I I so I I just think a lot of it makes sense, like, you know, like, I I think protecting the environment, the place that lives and exists on, the beauty of its environment is an important concept, right? I think I personally would love to not have a dandy in my front yard, it looks like it does, you know, I would much rather it looks something slightly better. And I wonder if there's if there have been these regulations in place, if you might have said, hell, I'll spend thirty five hundred dollars to make the facade look nicer so that I don't have this bright red thing in my window. Like, I I guess what I'm saying, I get why we're doing it and I I I think it makes a lot of sense. I really like frankly that you guys in that time period in twenty twenty and that difficult time period made such an effort to make it inclusive to people and to say to someone that's reading this page, like, you can live here, like, yeah, everyone in this room is white. But like, it doesn't need to be that way forever, you know, and it doesn't need to be something that we like prefer. And I like that you guys made that so clear in a comprehensive plan that seemed like frankly, it should have been, it could have been something about something else and you guys included that and I found that valuable. So all all in all, I I just I I got the comprehensive plan, there was a lot of sense to it, particularly the lack of sidewalks, like the fact that there's only two sidewalks, it's like kind of dangerous to live, like to walk around here. And the way that people don't integrate in the community the same way that they would, if they could walk around like Boysville, you can't walk the dog without getting into a conversation, like it's almost frustrating how social people are. And here, you don't get that because we're just, we got these two sidewalks and I'm trying not to get hit by a truck the rest of the time, you know? And so when I see, you know, that there's a way that there's a push for electric bike, you know, like installations and that there's a push for sidewalks and y'all are thinking about this and trying to implement it is exciting. Because it's the one thing that we see that we look around at this place and don't have is this like a is what y'all have identified. And so that's my my two cents on on the comprehensive plan. The review board plan was vastly less interesting to read. So I read, I got the gist of it, but I didn't pour into it, you know, quite the same way I might have put the comprehensive.
Okay, that would be the the site plan law?
Yeah, 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 I I figured I crossed that bridge if you allowed me to get.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's the way it was.
How about this? How about the proposed zoning law?
So I will admit that I I know less about zoning than I'm comfortable with for directly, that's one of the reasons I don't talk when I come to the hearing, so I'm mostly just here to listen. So I I think that it makes sense that we're trying to put in specific places where businesses can be. I think that's probably ideal, rather than having them all scattered or sort of piecemeal. I think protecting the water is a really great idea and I think having large open space is a good idea. So I think what I'm saying is that I got broad strokes, I'm all for the zoning law. I haven't dove into it as specifically as you might want for to answer your question on how I feel about like, you know, subsection A or B. But I I think that I agree with the principles that have been put forward here. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, great. Michelle.
I I guess, sorry, I I can't think of any questions right now, actually. I guess my, I just have one question, it's kind of odd. If would there be another committee that you would be interested in if there were too many people that have signed, you know?
I'm just like, want to help, like, I have the time, I have the interest, I feel like I can provide something, something slightly different, that's that's okay, too.
Okay.
If there's people more qualified than me to be on the review board, then put them there.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's just great to hear this enthusiasm. They have you in town.
Yeah, happy to be here, we like it. It's a nice place, people are nice here. I told people, even like, even people that are mad about this as they are, it seemed like, like, you know, it's a lot worse than the other parts of the country. I lived in South Carolina in twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, it's tougher there, like, we had it, we had it pretty gentle here, like, the way that people seem to interact and like, what we're fighting about is better than what other people are fighting about.
I I really appreciate that and I like what you said earlier about, I think you called it a public policy dispute. But I I think that's more, that's what I've said publicly before, that that's what this is about and the difference of opinion about, that doesn't mean we're not neighbors and friends, so.
We are regardless, yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you. You have a questions for Jack?
Oh, thanks very much for stepping up.
Yes, of course.
Cal?
Cal.
I mean, maybe it's a, for me, this is a question that I've asked before, it's just outside of politics a little bit, but reflects you, at least to me, what was the last book you read?
So the last book that I read honestly was.
Textbooks don't count.
No, it was the Best and the Brightest by David Haberfam. Haberfam, yeah, about the about the Vietnam War and how we managed to like get people that were so confident, so brilliant, so confident, so young and so convinced that they were right all the time. And the way they just pushed their way into Vietnam, because we're a young American, a good looking bridge, why the hell can't we do it? And the answer is to be amazing.
We got a test of American power, foreign policy.
Yeah, and what's startling to me now is is the way that like, my dad was like grew up telling me that, you know, Obama wasn't, this wasn't enough about Russia, it was never hard enough on Russia and now we all are desperately for Russia somehow and I don't really get that to happen there. I don't know how that bears on this, but we could put that in the notes that I think it's weird that we flip flopped as a country on on Russia, but that's the last book I read to answer you.
We don't have a lot of power on national policy.
Yeah, I find that frustrating.
I I do, too.
No, I mean, just to me, it's just like, you know, you're interested in policy sort of things, not, you're not reading science, the last book wasn't science fiction.
No, but I do read plenty of nonsense and I as an educated, my my master's thesis was on reading and I will, I will say that no matter what anyone is reading, it's okay, like, whatever they're reading is good. Like, if you give a kid a book on guns, a magazine on guns, because that's what he likes to read about, give it to him, let him read it. I like, science fiction, popcorn, science fiction is really good for getting a kid to read a book. So like, I read plenty of garbage and usually.
It's not garbage, like you said, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I read Star Wars books, I chug through those things.
You're probably right.
Kids, it's a lot to read.
Yeah, yeah, great for naptime.
I I have one more question. Are you currently a teacher or?
So I taught last year in Groton and I don't know if you know any of the people that work in Groton, but it makes you not want to teach so much anymore. I had a pretty brutal experience working as a teacher in Groton.
My wife said when she first started teaching.
Yeah, oh, so your wife teaches at Groton?
No, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, so it's the children were wonderful. The children are kind of everywhere are wonderful, if they're not, it's really your fault, you know, but the adults were difficult. And I was, I I found it to be like a borderline abusive work environment and it's made it hard for me to want to go back and go public on them. And so it is, it's really frustrating because obviously like I'm, frankly, the kids and I had a really good time. It was the adults that just made it not sustainable. So I'm currently her husband, that's his little job. And we're just kind of in deep, both our eyes. But so that's what we're, not not currently, but I don't think it's, that chapter is quite closed.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much, Jack. Okay, and so George Schellenbeck has also applied for the review board and he's here from Zoom land and I have to ask him to unmute or actually maybe he can't, but I don't think I'm.
Yeah, hello.
Hey, George.
Hey, how's it going?
Oh. Very well, can can you is that your image, a a chair with a head on it or something and or?
Wait, am I not on video?
You're not on video, no.
Oh. Why not?
Although, let's see. My my participants panel says you are.
Yeah, I don't, I I wouldn't say I don't have the best internet up here, but usually the video works.
Well, you you're a very, you're kind of like an icon right now, but there you are, okay. Welcome. So so anyway, I guess I'll just ask you to introduce yourself to everyone and tell us about your background and your interest in the the review board.
Hey, this is, sorry, my, Kazich. Uh, George Schellenbeck, I live up on Bald Hill. When did I move here, ninety-five? It's been a little while. Couple kids. You'll hear in the background, my wife lives here with me. I've done some work for Cal and Michelle and I, you know, work around town fixing things, this and that.
So i- is that when you say fixing things, are you, do you do construction, building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Although often in more of a repair, you know, and re rehabbing, not not a, not a lot of from from scratch. Yeah.
I remember you as a bookstore owner, too.
Well, that's true, did did twenty years at running a bookstore, but, you know. Uh, it was over, uh, over near the nice egg building in Freeville.
Where the vet clinic is now?
There's a vet clinic, yeah, large animal vet now, I think.
Well.
Oh.
Whatever.
Yeah, I thought they were going to do horses over there is what I heard.
Okay, interesting.
I guess large animals, I think of cows.
Yeah.
For some reason.
For some reason, yeah.
So you're you're interested in the review board, right?
Uh, I am interested in the way this town goes forward with its, you know, planning. I I I've been reading the, I've only made a hundred pages into the the zoning plan, it's it's not really a page turner, but I do appreciate the um, the care with which it was constructed. It it shows in the text that um, it was very carefully done, I appreciated that. So.
Great.
Um, yeah, and I I, you know, it's it's important how, what we do with our, you know, there's not making, we're not making any more land. You know, so we gotta take care of what we got.
That's right.
So.
Great, yeah, and I I'll just point out in case you're feeling bad about your you know, being riveted or whatever, that, I mean, so I I, one of my friends made a nice analogy, I thought at one of the meetings that the zoning law, it it's sort of like a car repair manual, right? So you you wouldn't, you wouldn't sit down and read your your car repair manual. But it's, you know, it's a tool and so when you need it, you use this section to understand definitions and this section to do this and so on, so.
A reference book.
Yeah, that's a good analogy.
Yeah. Great. Anything else you want to let us know? Have you looked at the comprehensive plan? Do you think this represents the comprehensive plan?
Um, I feel like that's next on my reading list, I guess.
Okay.
Um, I feel like I read the last comprehensive plan. Um, it was quite some time ago.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years ago, wow, yeah, well. Uh, it's not exactly fresh in my memory, but also a reference, but a guide going forward for, you know, like, a vision for what the town would like to do with with itself, so. You know, even if even if I don't agree with like any one particular thing in it, I appreciate without a plan, then it's just chaos, so. You know, I like a plan.
Yeah, and I will say that the revised plan that was finished at the end of twenty, officially adopted in in January of twenty-one, it it really it it harmonized, it reinforced a lot of what the first plan says, so.
Nice.
That's a good thing. Great. Anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself, George?
Um, I guess I've always felt in, you know, pretty good hands of our towns elected officials, so.
Except for one.
We shall go unnamed.
Yeah. No, it's always been good. Yeah, you guys have always been at least thoughtful, which I appreciate, so.
I think Tim has a question.
I was just wondering that if in your in your work in construction and building, have you had any opportunities to interact with review board or similar boards in the past?
Um, no, I don't think I have, I mean, a little bit with the, on my own house with the um, but not with the review board, just the the, you know, building inspection, code enforcement. Um, I haven't, because most of what I, you know, would do is, you know, revamp like an apartment or something, which wouldn't be any major changes, it would just be fixing up something that already existed.
Right, right. Thanks.
Yeah.
Great. My thing question is one is one was for Jack, what's the last book you book you read?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm reading these uh, these Slow Horses mysteries. Apple TV made it like a a a series of them, but I'm gonna read the British, they're like British spy. They're they're really funny, they're excellent, you know them?
Oh, yeah, I read them all.
Okay, I'm I'm working my way through, they're fantastic, highly recommended.
Wow, and the Apple TV adaptation is great, too.
It is.
Nick Heron, yeah.
Rick Heron?
Nick, Nick Heron.
Heron.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, good taste, George.
Yeah.
Great, great. Okay.
All right.
Thanks so much, George, thanks for joining us, so.
Thank you.
I've no, listen in.
Stay warm up there, yeah.
Okay.
Great. And I think we will have one more person joining us later. Um, you had a meeting until seven thirty, so she'll join us later and and we'll talk to her. She'll join us later and we'll talk to her then, so. Great, so in the meantime. I think we should move on. Through the agenda and then we can. We can. Move back to that. So. I will give my supervisor's report, just barely three. So. Kate and I did work with Hunt Engineering and Dryden. Um, and we did submit a joint application to the ConnectAll Municipal Interspec program. I think that was on March eighth. For build out of municipal broadband in, in Dryden and, and Caroline, partial in Caroline, so. I'm excited about that.
I'm really excited.
So let's, let's see where that goes and I, I. I'll keep you posted on that, I'm not sure what, I, I think we should hear, I'm not sure how long it will be, but I don't think it should be too long.
I don't think it's too long.
Yeah. Great. And I just wanted to mention that the countywide Rapid Emergency Medical Response Program. That we're rolling out this year is on track to begin on April first, so. I'm, I think the equipment has been. Refurbished and, and the trucks are ready. Um, they've hired personnel for that program and that'll be, that'll be happening soon.
Mark, did they, did they finalize where they're gonna house? How's a car in this, in this area, has it been?
The. I think so. But I don't want to say, because Mike's very, he's talking to a lot of fire departments and stuff, so I think there is one. Obviously, very ideal location that's been identified and agreed upon in Caroline. They're looking for two others within the county, I think the other one would be in like the, hopefully in the Newfield Enfield area. And then another one, I believe, like Lansing or something, so. We'll see, keep you posted. Then on Monday, I went to the second meeting, Cal joined me for the first meeting and couldn't come this time, but. Uh, we met with the USGS at their facility in Cortland, so. Just to, there's a stream gauge, there's a, a little, it looks, it looks like a little outhouse, there's a stream gauge in Brookton Dale. Um, the Carl Hilton's backyard.
It looks like a big outhouse.
It looks like a big house, okay.
Big of an outhouse, do you have?
Okay, anyway, and it's right on the stream in Carl Hilton's backyard and. So that stream gauge was put in in like. I think two thousand two or something. And there's also a stream gauge. Downstream at Beesimer. That, so these spring gauges measure how much water's flowing past and turbidity, so that it can ultimately figure out. How much sediment's going into, into the lake or the reservoirs. Um, and so it's a good way to measure. Um, how people treating, treating the water upstream, so the, the one in Brookton Dale was put in. As part of a countywide aquifer study, because that location was on like shale bedrock. Um, doesn't have a lot of soil on top of it, and so. They wanted to see how that differed from. Further downstream to understand. Flow of water and recharge of the aquifers and things like that, so anyway. This all, so, and so we've had a three-year. Funding agreement in place that we renew every three years since then. And the partners are County of Caroline, Town of Dryden, City of Ithaca. And Tompkins County Soil and Water. Um, and so it's, it's a true partnership, we don't bear the, we, our share is like thirteen percent or something. And so the, the three-year agreement terminated last fall. USGS reached out and said, the agreement terminated. Um, we're happy to renew it, but. Are you sure you want to? We're not sure that anyone's using the data anymore, we want to make sure there's a good reason to do so. So Cal and I met with them. Couple of months ago now, right, and. So they showed us data from the two, two different stream gauges to show really how similar the data is. And then they showed us some new technology, it's, I think it's. Photometric somehow that measures turbidity, so they can get more, better real-time measurements. Of, of what's going downstream, of the solids going downstream. Um, and so they were sort of. They were questioning whether we wanted to keep this going. And I just said, well, the town of Caroline. Nobody here is using the data, I just let you know that. But ultimately I said, and this is what I said at the last meeting on Monday, Cal, because I know you said the same thing. If, if you all have a reason to keep this going, we will support that and keep being a partner and support that effort. So they appreciated that and. So Roxy Johnson, who is in the Water Division at the City of Ithaca, said. You know, that she didn't see a reason to. They aren't using the data currently. From that station, she didn't see a reason to keep it going. So I suggested maybe we could just retire the station and if we need it again, we can, we can boot it up, and that's exactly what the USGS was thinking. Um, so that's the proposal, but since. Um, the station is in Caroline, we are officially in the agreement, we're like the lead municipal agent, so. So he wanted me to reach out to the board, to our board and let. Relate this information. And get an unofficial decision on whether we want to renew the funding agreement, which they're perfectly happy to do. Or if we want to retire it at this time, essentially, so.
So they would take Carl's.
No, stay there.
It would stay there. It would stay there, okay.
Would stay there, yeah, and, and apparently he said they do this for a lot of stream gauges. If their particular function is no longer. Needed, they'll just mothball it, they check it a couple of times a year, they maintain it, they keep it in good shape. And then if they need it again. They boot it up.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, so I'll do it later in the meeting, but I will offer a resolution, like, the reason I'm, 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 you know, this is because I'm wonky. And. Because when I tried to figure out what past town boards did. It's really helpful if it's commemorated by a resolution in the minutes, so that's the only reason I get it, so I'll offer that later. So, uh, great, thank you, that was a long-winded one. And then I will let you know, this is a very long-term effort I have periodically reported in the past, but. With the Town of Ithaca and Danby and Dryden. And ourselves, we've been working with Nice Egg for some time on an agreement to use the Nice Egg Railbed property. As a recreational trail. So we have finalized the terms of that and they're, they're. Very. Excited about it, so I will be bringing more information about that forward at our next meeting. So that's a. Exciting development, so that's my report. Any questions?
So where's this, where's that gonna be, that trail?
So that's the, the rail bed runs from, it's the, the South Hill Recreation Way Trail is the rail bed. Currently ends at Burns Road.
In Ithaca.
In Ithaca, and it continues out to the county border, near Whitechurch Road and Cottington Road. That's it. And it.
It, it comes, it comes in through. Like, in, in towards Brookton Dale to, to the gravel pit.
Okay, very cool.
Do you, you know where Banks Road is? So you start at Banks Road and go past Farm on the right, then it goes up a little hill and levels off for just a second. And goes on up, that's the rail bed right there where it just.
Where it levels off.
Levels off.
And you, you can see it on Google Maps.
Okay, cool, yeah, that's awesome.
And it's, it's casually passable now, but we're doing it, yeah, so. So the, the four towns are collaborating on this, so we'll be. Moving forward next month with. More information.
Can I, can I add something? So it's. To bring it out from Burns Road, Ithaca to, to Banks Road. It continues in the Town of Ithaca. Then it goes into Dryden, then Danby and Caroline.
Wow, cool.
Yeah. So yeah, you can do like that. Five-town hike in one day, don't die. Okay, that's my report. I am sorry to say that the town clerk is really sick, so she doesn't have a report for tonight. Um, that's why Velvet is filling in for her. Velvet, do you have anything to say about the clerk's office today?
Um, taxes are going well, we're almost done with those, those will be turned over in April sometime. Chris was a great help this year with taxes for Jess. And. Jess is doing a wonderful job. She's the best town clerk ever.
I agree with that.
That would be my, my synopsis.
Okay, very good, thank you Velvet.
You're welcome.
Cliff, our code officer. Did issue us a written report late this afternoon, I just. So we have that, I have that, I look at it, I don't know, does anybody else there?
I look at it, it's. It's in two parts, one are building permits and the other inspections.
Okay.
So it appears to me that things are rather robust right now.
Okay.
Mostly, mostly it's, it's repairs and. In maintenance, but there's at least one new house.
Okay.
Permit and a lot of inspections.
And swimming pool.
Swimming pool, you're right, swimming pool. Just in time for this, snow.
Great, so. Committee updates?
Uh, I don't know if any of you heard from Yvette Berger, and I'm not sure that she's gonna contact the board directly, but. She's who is doing the website revision.
Alright.
New design, so we're, we continue to work on that. She's made a lot of progress. And things are really falling into place and, you know, the main aim is to migrate what we have. On our current website, but make it much more readable and accessible. And she's come up with a lot of good ideas for doing so, so, so that's probably a long, long.
I got an email.
I think, I think she emailed everybody on the board.
Okay, yes.
Her bio and pictures and stuff like that.
She might have harvested what was on the website for you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I checked my email up.
I thought she did us her picture.
Great.
I guess I can say a little something about the history.
Yeah.
Um, so, Mark and I spoke with Barbara Cohn just about the. I'm calling it the History Room Advisory Committee, if anybody has a, is that her name for it?
Beautiful name.
Okay. And Kate has kindly agreed to. To be on it, and. I'm volunteering to be the chairperson for one year until we get things more organized and. Becky Dewitt has applied to be on it. I guess these can be more finalized as we move ahead, but we did talk to Barbara and she will be back in town in May, and so we're hoping our first meeting will be. In May, when she's in town, and we'll probably meet over at the History Room. And I'd like to see it as a preliminary step to working on a disaster plan, just to. See where everything is, see, start making a list of who you call. Apparently there has been a disaster there already, the radiator, radiator overflowed or, or something, but just to start. You know, at least before the renovation starts on the townhomes, I think it's important to get. Some things in place, so. I'd say we're still working on it, but it's slowly coming together. This committee.
Yeah, and, and the, I mean, our conversation with Barb was that. How, how would you characterize it, how, how we frame the. The purpose of the committee.
Yeah, I see the committee as more as, like, first of all, a conduit of information from the. Just from the history room to the town board, it's more direct. And, and also there's just a lot of. So for people that don't know, we have a, a history room that has a lot of historic artifacts and papers and books. Related to the early settlers of Caroline, so. Uh, and, and my profession is, I'm a book conservator, so I'm, I have an interest in. Uh, how you, you know, preserve these things. I'm, I'm not interested in how people collect them particularly, I feel like that's. But, you know, part of my.
Sorry, that's a good side joke.
Yeah. No, I mean, well, part of my job description was always like to set up a disaster plan, which is seriously just like who you're gonna call if. You know. You have a leak or something, so that things don't get flooded and everybody's like, oh, I don't know, go. So that would be the first thing, but then also like. You know, I'm familiar with a lot of, say, free webinars, low-cost webinars about collections, care and stuff that I would be happy to. Share, and I think it could be a lot of fun for people that actually do volunteer for the history room. To take advantage of some of this free education. And then we can start maybe planning a few fun events, you know, some lectures or.
There seems to be a renewed interest in.
Yeah.
Roots.
Yeah, yeah, I just think the town board would have a certain amount to offer. And certainly not interested in taking over anything that the historian does, but you know, facilitate. Just how things go, so.
I like, I like the part about, you know, doing fun events, I thought that was good.
Anyway, that's what we're working on and we had, I thought I could talk with Barbara Cohn, who's the town historian. About that, and so. Anyway, great, we're working on it.
So should we, do you want to formalize the appointments at some point in the future?
Yeah, you want to do that in the future, or, or, we can do it tonight if you want.
Be fine with me.
Okay, let's just do it.
Okay.
So.
That's great.
So I'm totally asking that Becky Dewitt be a member, because she's taken a lot, she has a. Very. I don't know, her, her resume's. Been sent to everybody, but she really has. Done a lot of classes and done a lot of studying and, I don't, do you want to have Becky say anything then?
We're always happy to hear Becky say something.
You have anything you want to say, Becky?
No, Becky, don't say anything, please.
About your interests.
What would you like me to?
Project, go ahead, let us, let us, yeah.
Wouldn't you like me to say about my. Experience?
You can just give us a little summary of your experience and your interests.
Okay, well. I have, I have a long interest in history, American history. And. But, you know, life gets in the way, you know, so. Oh, I don't know, you know, the nineties and the first part of the, this millennium, but. Yeah, so moving Caroline and. Really falling in love with. You know, the place. You know, had. A profound respect of. Making me, even though I, I immigrated here, or immigrated here. Twenty-two years ago or something. Um, you know, I just really found my history, interest in history, becoming very focused on. This community. And so, to make a long story short. I. You know, I have a background in American history, I've taken some, you know, coursework on American architecture and that sort of thing. Um, and I have found that in the last four or five years. Uh, all of that has really. Become very focused on Caroline and the architecture in Caroline or the. You know, the history of the community and. I don't feel like I'm saying this very well, but. You know, just recently I've started a research project about the Catskill Trail. You know, which of course was. You know, which of course was Route seventy-nine. Um. And looking at. The communities along the stretch of seventy-nine and. You know, how the Catholic Church type came to be. Uh, is an example, but I've been involved with a number of different groups. Any of you don't have a letter that I sent to. Um, Mark and Michelle, I'm happy just for a copy to you. Uh, but I, you know, I was really involved at the very beginning of the Caroline History Club. Um, later to be known as the Caroline History Association. That takes, you know, two years. More recently, I've been very involved with the Tompkins History Center. Um. And, you know. Been involved with Humanities New York, uh and. Wonderful organization, I say very seriously. Uh, in helping communities to, you know, put on reading and discussion series and other kind of programs. Um. You know, uh. Depending on the interest of the community. Um, and. Yeah, so. Um. That's, you know, that's pretty much it, I've been a member of Historic Ithaca for five or six years. Did some volunteer work for Historic Ithaca, in their significant elements store. Volunteer work for the Catholic History Center. Um, and volunteers in Caroline History Association, on their questions, many. Who wants to meet new historic fathers. Um, that, you know, perhaps you would. So, yeah.
Cool.
Um. And I love it.
Sounds like you're really into it. Yeah, sounds like you're really into it, so.
Yeah, and. I really love the music private, um especially. Tim Larkin and I are working on a project. Uh, there's an important collection over at Overlook's, um. That was a massive collection, really, uh. From the nineteenth century, um Charles Fairmoss. Uh, of. The descendant of Benoni Moss. Who spent, you know, forty years of his life collecting. All kinds of information out of Caroline and reporting sort of. What I now think of as very early oral histories. Um, before we had any technology, so he just would sit down with somebody and report what. What they talked about. Really important information. With about nineteenth century life in Caroline. It's.
So what, you know, you're just, you're interested in serving this advisory committee?
Yes, um. I, you know, um. I'm really. I I would just love to be. You know, part of a discussion, something. Um, related to, I did do some work towards the Barbara Cohn also a few years ago.
Okay.
And so I'm pretty familiar with the history room and. The question up there and. Uh. I haven't been worried. To be honest with you, um. Because I think that. For example, if there was a fire in this building. Lots of that.
Yeah, Michelle talked about an emergency.
Disaster plan is really important. Um. If there was, um. There is. I will say that I think surely would have done a very good job at uh helping get things organized up there. Um. But I think there's more that can be done as far as, you know, protecting progress. Um, I use that as a example. And, you know, I guess I would. You know, just hope that, um. We, you know, can. As a community can come together to support Barbara, uh volunteer wise and. Uh, in doing more, um, so.
Yep.
Or like the brands. Sorry, I. I like those real ones.
Sure.
Yeah. We put you on. We put you on the spot, so.
They do talk to kids that are in the PMA department at Cornell University about. Story structure and any view. Uh, the script structure of what has actually, because there's little stories that happen around here historically. Uh, and maybe not. Maybe because my partner is. A safety who does PMA department at Cornell, and I need to talk.
I I would love that.
Yeah, to just build their script structure up, of course, it sucks.
Okay.
I'd like to believe a plug.
That I think that would be an awesome collaboration.
Yeah.
As for the story, and and apologies, uh, which I am. Uh, I think that you would. Do really well to speak to those children. They are children about story structure. Uh, and what is actually running the mill around here.
Stories structure.
I can I can tell you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's perfect.
Absolutely.
I've been meaning to come to your. Your booth.
I really noticed you serious, uh, and uh, but I I'm a. As Phil and Thea goes, uh, and a historian with things, there were stories we. Told from that are around here and those children. Historically, costumes and the right way to do it. Go ahead, but uh. I think that you would do, talk to those children.
Wow.
Okay.
Thank you.
This circle is. Later.
No, no, I'm. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Becky mentioned various and, you know, if copies of them back here, they're not. Down in the crop library under all.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I just.
Yours or whichever that.
Other crop.
Hey. Let me just say that. And I are planning. Reinscribe the. Um, and. Hopefully publish. Cornell's given us preparation to do that.
That's right. Okay.
No, there's two things. It's, I think a contract or. Sign on House Hall Room, library and grounds, I'd really see before. Just for. I mean, that that gets like. I can't. You know, identify, catered and demarcated.
So.
That that has been true in hell.
Well, this is great, so these are tasks.
And, yeah.
Uh, get to us as it comes. And we can, you know, make a list of things.
Yeah.
So it's. Tonight, we're just thinking that we'll. That that'll be. The board, it would be uh Kate and. On and her deputy. Johnson, then uh just kind of as. Counselperson. Becky Dewitt.
But there's there's so many good things.
So we can just start with that. We'll have our first meeting in. Right in the.
Certain board is a resolution?
Yes.
Second.
Second. And so that's.
Yeah.
The. Further discussion? Call for a vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote? Great. Okay.
Okay, we have a committee.
Resolution there, Velvet.
Got it.
Thank you. Um. Rate, um, any other dates?
Do we wanna talk? A generation for this town hall, all briefly, that we've got. That's one quote from President. Kind of like to do. Having natural gas by electricity here. New replacement down. Barnes, thirty thousand dollars.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Generators naturally. Power. We met with John Fingerlake's. Electric, it's something. Um, their opinion. Look at the town here. Uh. And it was mentioned, you know, doing the battery backup. Versus a.
Mm-hmm.
Generator type and. Hang on some additional. What do you call those? Solar panels on the roof here. And the battery backup is all the. Transfer, but it seems. Right now, he. More, I just kinda wanted to give you a little. I contacted some people. Two, all these two people. Um, what are the challenges with? Electric. Up here, because. Sure, when you've looked at the electric bill, we use more electricity. Where than we do at the. I mean, so. There there's quite a high demand if we, let's say, two-day outing. And there's questionable weather. That would, a battery. Battery big, back, that. Up would be quite expensive. But a lot of the draw is because, because this building just leaks. So maybe it's something here to put on. Until after this building is getting tied up and. And um energy, it is, as well as, you know, she's still involved, revolve, evolving. Okay, but, um, so. Into, I mean, we would, we would, it's race out, you know, get started and see where. All park is and what's possible. So, um. See it on. Back, I think it, I think it's, I really think something critical, we've become so dependent on. Things and it doesn't. We've had too power up for more than. Well. You know, we got a couple of power outage in three months. I mean, the other, that's, you know, is it, per se, it is. So, yeah, it's critical down there. And there's a quite greater. Age, water, which is huge. You know, it's it's about thousand, fifteen thousand. And some, the same, pretty much the same places, but there's the. You're doing something.
I mean, one, what? Sorry. My question. Might be how to figure into the. Position grants and. And whether or not. There could be another avenue of funding like that, either through the. Something subsidiary with this.
I I was also wondering. Brown was talking about money available. Could be. That there might be some money. The solar part. If we did the solar, there might be. Mike Brown had, I can't remember what it's called, he talked about.
Yeah.
Go.
It's not like a. A contractor.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, putting up some fields.
How how old is Tom Barnes?
Used from the twenty. And it.
Okay.
What, Dayton, um. You know, the newer ones now are air-cooled. You know, one of the older models. With a radiator on, it had problems of. In a certification of. Reliability is. Not what it should be.
Great.
Um. Coming down the road for us. Called MS four. With stormwater sewer systems. And this is, we've got some coming down the. Um, we are. In a MS four.
Yeah.
And that is a road down to. Or to Upbeast Road. Nation comes with. A thousand residents. Found in the past has, you know, township. And it involves things like. Minimum control. There's best management, this this is all for stormwater. Um, a stormwater, Kaway. When she start pronouncing something wrong? Coordinator. To implement the. To the maximum extent possible. Now, so what are these, some of minimum control measures? Um. This, I've just gotten through from the D E C. I'm scrolling down through.
I interrupt.
You sure can.
Doesn't, we. Yes, we've been in MS. Pretty, because of this design, it's just, it's just a fact, so.
Yes.
We are, there's an environmental support community by the D E C. And um there are six minimum control.
Yes.
That's M C F. One, or. One to six. So one, like six. Highway department, and it asks. Kind of, how how many suite a year, how many mile? Hmm, um, how much car? Do they collect, how much? Whatever, um. It asks for how many violations, that that's M C M, I don't know, like that, but anyway. My point is, you know, like our watershed. Does a little cleanup. Every year, that we put that in there. As a talent activity. Um, with the faculty committee, uh, does public outreach. That's a plus. So all of these things. Contribute. One does to educate and mitigate. Stormwater. Yes. So, um, I guess I refer to you, and so it's. You know, you. It looks daunting when you see these forms. I, um, like, you've talked to the code op. What what's your total for? Talk to Bob, the highway, what? And and then for, but I don't know. There's some new things happening, I. Those are, but the minimum. Have been in place. For August fourth.
Yes. So being, is is I. You know, I've attended about the six webinar, been on, you know, things. And the things up quite a bit. As I see it, and yes, just better.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And kind of going. No, but you. Especially the one I kind of freaked out. Uh, I mean, I think these are all good things that we wanna be doing, but when all of a sudden you're gonna have. It's gonna come and wanna see you. Records of you over, you did this, you. You know, I just. Like, these are good regulations. But they're just be. I I feel. I sent each of you um. Copy of the webinar on the water management system. It takes about a little over. It was presented by, now at D E C. And very. But, you know, during the. Same on the chat, uh, we're a small rural town. Participate, and we're, you know, I'm just concerned, uh. You know, he said. Let's talk. Which to me is just kind of what. Up yowls.
I would, I would have taken that just the opposite. You know, that he was. Be really anxious.
Don't get nervous.
Yeah, yeah, I, but you. Wanted to address any, yes, he didn't want to. He didn't get on with his presentation. That's a fair.
So what is your proposal?
I just wanna make you aware. What I'm seeing and what is. Along, and are we going? Are we going to have to offer a stormwater? Or coordinator, is it a paid position, is it gonna have to? And certified, because we we have had them. Are they saying, no, you know, yeah, you had this, but you're gonna. Raise the bar, that's. That's what I'm seeing in this. Is, yeah, here is a bar here. But we want it here in three years and we want it in five years.
The bar is fine, but the bar means.
Yeah. And you you watch that. Or, no, all five of them. Well, whatever. It's it's something that we need ongoing discussion of through. Summer, and I need more informed about it, and. I asked Angel Heinekold, maybe. Talk with us about, you know, thought we could work something. But as I said, here's a, here's a bit. At a bar, a stormwater runoff, whole measures, M C Ms. We're not staying here anymore. We're gonna expect you to do. We're gonna expect you to do five, three years and then five.
But I just.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, I'm wrong.
Yeah, but I mean, let's, let's define what this is.
Yeah, it's, it's right here.
Okay.
But I, I didn't want to, I didn't, anybody. If I page handout tonight.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So.
Take a look.
We'll take a look, yeah.
Okay. So maybe we should discuss. Me this.
Sure.
Yeah.
Maybe good, okay, thank you. It's great.
So yeah, I'm playing track. Here we go.
You're setting a trap?
No. Trap and ski.
You're throwing it up in the air? See if we can hit it.
What did it do with it?
Great.
Uh, they didn't mention anything.
Jill.
You'll do.
Okay, we're gonna move you. Have another interview.
So that's what I want to move to now. So uh. Jean McFeeder says, so I'm gonna, um, review board interviews because she's. So well. There you are.
Here I am.
And. Didn't know you, I'll just ask you, um. I have a little about, about yourself, your history and um. And your review board.
Okay. Um, my husband and I um, have lived in the town of Caroline since. Um, I guess about nineteen seventy when we got married. And we bought land up on Baylor Road and we've built a house, um. A log house that my husband built. We own twenty six acres. Um. I've worked at a variety of positions over the years. I worked for Congressman McHugh and Congressman Hinchey as their. District representative. And um. I worked for BOSI's doing community education. And then from two thousand to twenty fourteen, I worked for the Chamber of Commerce as the executive director. Uh, I retired from the chamber then and began my own business. I did a lot of um. It's Jean McFeeder's consulting. I did a lot of consulting for small businesses and nonprofits. Road um, grant applications. Many of them for the hospital and for um, the airport, but lots of other things as well. Also uh, do strategic planning for lots of nonprofit organizations. I think I have finally succeeded in retiring. Uh, this is my fourth attempt. So I'm really working hard at that. Um. And uh, I chaired the zoning commission for the town uh, for two years. I'm interested in the review board because I think I learned a lot doing the zoning commission and. Um. And that zoning, the zoning board. Um. Really will have to look at that document as well as the um. You know, as, as it, as it looks at um. The development in the community that's brought before it. And I'd be very interested in serving either as a member or as an alternate.
Great. Great.
Okay.
Any, any.
Jane, Jane, maybe we could ask. That has been asked. Have you read? Law?
Have I read the zoning law?
Probably memorized it, Tim.
Guess I read, I even read, I even read the newest version. Uh, so, yeah.
My question, what book you read?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Book you've read?
The book?
What's the last book you read?
Oh, what's the last book I read? Uh, I read a book that's called Nineteen Reservoirs, which is about the water system for the city of New York. And um, and how it, you know, over the years from. The late seventeen hundreds through the nineteen fifties, it um. Sort of usurped a fair amount of land in the Catskills for reservoirs. Um. Using eminent domain. Uh, and you know, it's, it's absolutely required for New York City. If you think about New York City, it's surrounded by water, but none of it is, is potable. Um, because it's the ocean and then it's the Hudson River, which is brackish in the New York City area. Um, it was a fascinating book at, looking at. Um, the issues of what's good for the community versus what's good for individuals.
Did Robert Moses write it?
No. No, it's actually a very recent book and it's um. It's written from the point of view of saying, we really need to understand. What happened to the people in the Hudson, in the Hudson Valley? Um, and that, you know, their homes were taken from them and their land was taken from them. And they were often not, not given fair market value whatsoever.
Interesting.
Another one to the list.
Great, for Jane.
Oh, I don't think so.
Anything else you want to tell?
No, I think, I think, uh, you know, I know all of you and.
Yep. So good. We think you pretty well too, so that's great. So, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Maybe. Uh, maybe less words.
Okay, so we'll return to. Um. This meet of the meeting and um, the discussion of the zone. So. Begin by just. Summarizing. You. Um. Perhaps minister. Issues. Things, so. Uh, one procedural thing that do is the zoning law. Um. Three articles of this are essentially the same view. Uh, so um. We need to, need to repeal the existing um, site plan laws. Bump heads with the zoning law when we adopt it, so. Um. And um. Discuss this with and, and guy and the, the solution we come up. This on the local law filing um, would read as Caroline local law number. Probably ten, twenty twenty four, a local law, local laws, number of twenty twenty four. Fourteen, excuse me, and number eighteen. Site plan laws and the town of Caroline zoning law. Being enacted by the, for the town of Caroline, Tompkins follows section. Site plan review, local number one of twenty four, and number two of twenty eighteen are hereby repealed in their. And then the town of Caroline zoning as follows is here adopted. So um. That's. When did edit of first um, local law page um, that would be law to set. To clarify um, and clean the plate of the zoning law. Um. Does that make sense to?
Yes.
Okay. Then um. Excuse me.
Yeah. Um, subdivision coming to play on any of that?
That is, that is. Um, but. We revising the subdivision law and so we will. Will do very likely same. Process when we adopt subdivision law to repeal subdivision law, so. It's a good question. So that it's um, then would be um. So we did. Re receive from the county from our. Um. General municipal nine submission. This, that's a part of state that tells you, you have to. The county review this for possible fight impacts. admitted again the reason and, and they did with. With no wide impacts, but then a cop at um. Is the previous slap of section five, eight, point G, D, point two. Point A with we. Replace with their language with a little bit different language, so read any town action. Brawl to Tompkins County. Under New York's general municipal law section nine L M and may be evaluated by the. Potential impacts on waterfall as well as other, as outlined in the state. Period. So. Just. That's pretty straightforward to say.
Or are we with crime, take their. Relation if they don't.
Uh, for the company, not required to take their comments at all. Is that what you mean?
You mean in the case that they would.
For the evaluation.
But I read the thing, they didn't like the reduced setbacks. They wanted setbacks of a hundred feet from the creek. He said, well, but you could write it, but.
That's the first time.
Yeah.
Um. What they said there was that it would take. A super majority of the board to override if they said. You know.
Yeah.
In the two thirty nine. I do think that there's. It's. There's a muddy, there's a confusion or I think it's. So the county doesn't regulate land use, so I think.
Was to regulate it and now things, no, we're gonna regulate it.
Regulate water.
That's, yeah, so that what she's saying. That's, I think her wording is, I think that's what she's saying, no, we're not. Land use, we're regulating quality.
Regulating land use, that backs up to a hundred feet instead of.
Yeah. Well, I mean, about this is this, the language. That is to include. This language now say, by way to by the county, well as other criteria. Last, I mean, the last version. Was much than that, so I see this. Uh, strong improved generated by them and. I'm quite happy to include information, it's so. National, this is.
You never dealt with regulator that comes, there's no, I'm going with it.
Well, we can.
There's anything we can do about that.
Right. Right.
So, doesn't.
But then I feel there has to be back on sometimes with things you did. If somebody decides it's got to be back downstream, brook to that problem.
Yeah, so it's to this, so.
To the.
So, I'm not in the mood to argue with the.
We had a, Mark and I had a very productive session with the county. In the fall, I guess it was. And um. They had expressed concern with this.
Okay.
And we. Discuss and explain the rationale for you. The board. Distance makes why.
Mm hmm.
Uh, they accepted the rationale, well, and then their first of the second, their first letter. They accepted that we provide rationale. And then said, yeah, buddy, does something. You should let them know that we're gonna. Yeah, we at that. And the revised then had to send to them again. This time they place off in their position. And I look at this as a good faith.
Okay. Say, I want to push back, I don't say to me personally, but. If, if you. Cause you already kind of identified this, talked with them about, now we've just got this kind of. And this is going back and forth.
Well, and this, so this is just an informational. Kind of like a footnote.
I think they did it by that. They don't have, the, the county recommendations for, those are. That the county has. Hundred foot and fifty foot, but those are recommendations to other municipalities. What they're saying is, saw we put that language in there like that and said. We will be looking. You know, the county wants on water quality and the state law, so.
Yes, I was looking at, I was like, this is, you know, so this project that this might. Thing, you know, and. But he's trying to do something within the. The area. So, and, and I look at it as, I'm glad that they're calling for certain projects, so. I think water quality. Sorry.
This edit is okay with everybody? Okay, it makes sense right now? Yes, I think, okay. Um. So that's the second. The third one is for development units.
Just blame us, Mark.
Yeah. Tim pointed this out.
Yeah, I was. Reading. Definitions of it and I realized. Current development unit. Limited just a single family. To a single household and one or two family dwellings. And I realized that the mission didn't you on to include. And multifamily dwell. So this is. This is a, just clarification of this and. Of a residential unit. In relationship to single family. And it, it's strange that we had it before, but it's. And it dropped off to some commission. Radar, what, what this then does, which is up. Our application in table two point one. Which of the uh. Development units and that are laid out in our table. Is that, is that clear?
People like, when it's. For, for units in the, we assigned. We, we allowed what? This dwelling for a development unit. For. Affordable housing. Eight or. Something like that.
It's two point one density and that's allowed by development type, rural district. Development types on this. On the, on the. Um. Which should be reflected in the definition, our single flat family dwell. For the family, which were. Child dwelling, which wasn't multifamily dwelling or multi, which wasn't. Multifamily dwelling or multi, what's in your affordable housing. So. What this definition does. Refer back to the tables for the, the job.
Does that?
Yep.
You pondering it, Cal?
No. Yeah, I was going along with.
This. We, you know, we comment.
Cause the um. Uh, definition of it. Um, that is, is a fly one family unit. Family units, so it, it didn't.
If there was a contradiction with.
Yeah. Absolutely.
There was a gap.
Yeah.
It's really a gap.
Right. And um.
Corollary to that. Corollary to that. It was just. Table two, two point one. For town dwelling. There are family and multifamily dwellings. There are two in the use table in. There are two in the use table in both their two designation for dwellings. One house dwellings with four. And the which is townhouse dwellings with um. Remind us townhouse dwellings with units are everywhere. Pound house units with more require. The so the units allowed for development in table two point one. Um, the townhouse dwelling, one development unit, not how structure. Doesn't specify of those is referred to. So the question is add one development. Needed for each townhouse structure of units or less. So that each house. With four dwelling units, one development unit.
So. This is a density of typically, right? So um. That the right wording we want for that because previously we had a townhouses to be three dwelling units in the previous.
Listen, that earlier draft.
No, I'm going back to that. I'm trying to explain. Um. Do we like if what we're trying to figure is if somebody could throw of sixteen ten. That would be four minutes, right?
Yes.
Is that what? Okay. So that each one would be four development. Well, that'd be one development, right?
So wouldn't be a.
Which which follow definition in the use table.
Okay, so.
From it every.
So if you had twenty, that would be five development, you know, according to this step.
Right. Which follows the in the use table between the two. So what we're trying to do here. Just clarify the reference.
Yeah.
Of this two point one to these used to.
Yeah, definitely. So I just want to bring his group. Uh. And I think. So, yeah.
I think the whole law is groovy.
So those um. Those are edits that I found that there are there any that I've missed.
And I meant and volunteer to co-written. Received in relation to this public hearing and we received. Two, only two actually, received a couple of of supporting letters. Um, but then there were two currents um.
Those are different.
Two things. They both reflected very much the same thing. Uh, one. Us to, and we've heard this before. Read the law of the um, which is this. All of the qualitative.
Quantitative.
Chapter, et cetera, et cetera. I think all kind of had those discussions. Or that we understand would feel that way, but. That um then a little bit of discussion of the. Um. Development units. And and what was raised in what in relationship to the.
Thresholds.
To their goals that we have. And um. This, this in the current threshold, three, that's marked by your. And and this. Citizen record lowering our four. In this is in the multi-family or senior, or they can go up to eight. Units um recommended the status. Then what prompted my the definitions mark. And the align.
Yeah.
The current, the current chart. So that ended up very helpful.
Yeah.
And I think we're also redo the other laws come up again in relationship to that law. Subdivision law.
What will come up again in subdivision law that.
They again covering some of this.
Yeah.
Some of this territory.
Yeah. So I just, since it was brought up and it's before about um the different. And um. Design lines and supplementary stamp, which you know are are more. Supplementary stamp are um not mandatory, but there are things that um. That we've like that would support um the goals of the town. Um. The um. They give uh flexibility review board working with her. And it it at least. Talked to Dan, the planner. She thought that was the thinking, the zoning commission was about that. That wanted to give a little bit of flexibility in those discussions. Um. The uh as we move forward, view board deals with projects. Um. We'll be able to see how these. And uh. We can model as we feel it. So. I can understand it. Um, and she's view boards do feel this way. Um. But like to have, you know. The clear um things that you ask a developer about, did you do this? Just use this and takes a lot of the. Judgment. Um, but um at the end of the day, I I think there's a good balance in this. Between the two, two approaches and and we can, we can work up forward. So.
I mean, I'll also add that I speak qualitative language in the law. Frankly, there's not.
Yeah.
Um, it directly the comprehensive plan and the like taken from the comprehensive plan. And I think it's to maintain the continuity between us, especially since legally. It's a plan is the better book. There's only law. So I'm quick personally.
Yeah. Great. I'll just say I I personally would want the review board to use a certain tier of judgment. And I don't want the there. I don't want them to be handled by specific language. Which is especially with people that are this and they said that's a real problem. Like in Massachusetts, some of their environmental laws that that it's considered actually. At uh a little ability and and judgment. So I that the people on our review. Could utilize judgment. I think that's good. And anyway, so I'm I'm totally. Of judgmental language.
It's true.
When I I agree with just said, I I think it's important um zoning board have stability and. Can come to consensus of the characters and if yes, or whether it's. Other.
Yeah.
I don't, I can't think of a good word. Thanks.
Great. So in brief, that's all I have to summarize. In front of the last public hearing and and what we heard in public comments. Um, don't add more than that. So I'm. Comfortable with.
So one thing I want to do, so I I pointed out four major changes. Um, so I I would opt those by by resolution. So I'll put those. For our as presented.
I I'd like to have one appropriate at this point change in definitions. Not a change, but an addition under pop-ups. I love food truck.
Yes. Exactly. What would you like to add?
Food trucks.
Is somebody in this room?
Can you?
Nope.
What are you trying to add?
We felt that uh we're included under pop-up.
It's not a pop-up.
Uh.
A food truck is not a pop.
We're we're gonna read.
Well, I'm just saying, let's put it pop up food trucks.
A food truck is not a pop.
But it is, it is a food establishment. So.
Bring that to, let's let's just say food.
Fun. Another definition.
If I can, a pop-up is something that it is uh that comes and goes. Uh, intervening in a food truck that is. A contract through the property owner, not through like a pop-up. Uh, on your here, right? Food truck is some prior movie. Right at the at the six. Uh, a food truck is something that is priorly owned thing standard through owner. Through it's not a pop.
Well, anyway, then I think it's I think it fits under food and beverage, but we can add including.
Yeah.
Well, if you. Requires another public hearing, which I'm seriously opposed.
I I didn't do like a food truck is not a pop-up. So.
But it does, it does fit under food and beverage.
And absolutely.
We could say. Beverage.
Forget pop-up.
Now says this may outdoor facilities, out services period. Say this may include facilities, takeout service, food trucks.
Yes, that.
Yes, okay.
Hey, everybody, if you say food, it's a, it's a. I just want to see it say. The word. Not saying beverage.
You know, the plan, the plan this law is so long. Okay, you want to. Because everybody is thinking the definition for every.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And I'm not kidding. If you look at how many definitions there are, it's like five. So.
Yeah.
Better than anybody. Three years.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just. That food and beverage is S P R everywhere.
Yep.
So. They don't food trucks. They'll be subject to. Included specifically.
Okay.
So we know.
Yeah, they uh all those pop-ups and not a pop-up. My own differentiation.
We're good. Thanks.
Yes.
Papa.
I'm there.
So.
Added. So this may include abilities, takeout services, trucks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Friendly amendment number five change for the night I found out it. So. Um.
Make the check up to Kelvin's.
I gotta go smoking right now. I think that I heard.
Yeah. So I will put that to adopt those five changes.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Sir?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
Hey, um. Um, that brings us to the next order of business. With a resolution up a town of Caroline. I um want the board is. Ready for me to move forward.
Yes, I'm ready.
So with that. We'll move mission to adopt a town line zoning law. Where ordered the town of Caroline by red created a zoning commission in February twenty one with a charge. Existing conditions recommend of the zoning districts. It regulations to be therein through a process which is an accommodates public input. Make a preliminary hold public hearings on very report and submit a file to the town board and where. The Caroline Town Board of Zoning Commission in March and twenty twenty one. Craft zoning regulations to holes of the town as as the town's updated comprehensive. Adopted on January thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Whereas the Caroline Town with community partners and associates to assist the commission with its work. And whereas after fifty one things and two public hearings, the zoning commission presented their file to the town board on March twenty. Twenty twenty three. The board accepted their report on. Twenty twenty. And whereas the board has further reviewed and revised zoning law with public. Input over the past, including public care, February fourteenth, twenty twenty and March twentieth, twenty twenty. And whereas the town board has reviewed town of Caroline zoning law. In which a Hamlet district was that several changes were made to the use. With respects to the funding of the prior C Corp section F narrative. It's two and three negative declaration changes individually or. We whether standing or in respect of any of changes made or could have. Upon any prior impugnation findings. That prior findings or determine of no or minor impact likely to change or. Or become in the future or significant impacts that are formal supplemental necessary and the existing. Negative declaration by duly continued. The town attorney helped me. And whereas the town of has referred the pro proposal uh and later the amended version. Tompkins County Planning and Sustainability Department or G M L to L M and N review. Of which the county determined this action will have no significant wider inter-community impact. And whereas the proposed zoning law viewed by the New York State Department during markets and other interest. And adjacent counties have been notified. And whereas the proposed zoning law viewed by the town attorney. And whereas having third public input, the Caroline is satisfied. That the proposed town of zoning law will guide developing a Caroline in a. That promotes the goals and the plan and protects the interests of residents' properties. Therefore, all the Caroline hereby adopts local number it will. Up to with two thousand for the town of Carol zoning law. I I did I get a second on that yet?
A second.
Secondly. And. So all call for by roll call. Um, before we do that. We're invited to make a statement um. Before we vote. To start.
I mean, I would like to first really thank town of Caroline zoning commission. Um, my fellow members of the town board were in so assiduously detail over the past. Three years in the development. Oh, um, and I think it's also really extend our appreciation are extremely passionate. Who um.
You and me too.
Yes, uh, who attended new names and provided this amounts of input. This law, this is, this is, I think, that really reflects the communal voice. The zoning commission and later were adopted pretty much every situation that was made to them. Hey, there were some that did, but the vast majority were probably, I think, uh, this is a law of a kind of a community. And I, and I just say that I recognize it's run extremely high, but as I've said a couple of times. For the beginning. I think that that how fortunate we are, blind to be populated by such involved citizens. I think that this is a law that's serve us well. Uh here is to protect home business, protect home and make compatible land uses. Protect environmental resources, water, land and air. And incentives that we don't have portable housing. So uh I think everyone who's been involved in this were a very, very long process.
Okay. I repeat some of what you said, thank all the Caroline who got involved, uh came out, were engaged. In commented in person thing and it's really important. People. Involved, they know what's going on, government, it's, I've said this thing really great about living in a small town, can't get involved, can't have an impact. Um and you can volunteer and make a difference, so. I thank uh the people who served on the town. And they spent and tons of meetings and all those emails, I found the answers to the emails really full for me um on the town. Read the questions and read the responses to understand where they were going with the zone. Um, I wanna thank people who worked on the rewrite of the comprehensive plan. And comprehensive plan because all work. You know, the the zoning wouldn't be here without the plan and the outreach and people put, so. I'm gonna assure everyone that uh I have listened and I have read the comments on those and the written things that come in and gone through the pages, I read the petition and letters that were written. Um, but again, I with the team, I I think that uh this zoning law is reflective its input and their concerns. And it allows here in Caroline, I had the future development of the town. It protects controlled and unwanted development and helps our country really be beautiful and a place to live. There was a section, this is sure um. Does it the law was expanded and enhanced holiday policies, act slopes, streams and resources. Vital importance to the town that proposing establishes map to allow for new growth and development in a way that can maintain care of a small town and historic care and agricultural resource. So. Cool, it's a tool used going forward and I'm proud of being part of this. Um. And I know it's, but it has to be, we need, and so we need the details, we need the and um we're looking at it going, um it'll be adjusted, changed, um law should be, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you really prepared anything that I'll just. If you comment, as a member of the zoning, I wanna thank members of the zoning commission and the chairperson Jean McTheater, who, I mean, everybody worked really hard. Hours doing and listening to years and listening to complain. Um, and I I think actually what happened, adjusting the definition of the food and drinks, so included pop ups is the food truck, sorry, food trucks. It's it's so of what happened throughout this, but you know. Being able to think of every case, somebody would say, well, what if, then we say, oh, yeah, what about? But you know, and we would, we would discuss it, table it, and we would come back again, and so I um. It should be in the future and that's, that's designed to work. But then again, you know, you're not to get all sad from the way democracy works, right? Everybody, they had a voice. The November provided another, or you know, the majority will seem to support this town board's doing, so I'll just say everything was intent. Worked really hard and I'm appreciative of everybody's support, not so everybody's criticisms, but you, everything is, so um. You know, specific complaints that had things, certainly everything was taken into account and uh we do live in a pretty great and everybody is concerned about keeping the way the community and that's that's real looking at and what we have been through the last three years, you know.
So, well said.
There's a lot of good document. Too much of it. Rules, which rules to prevent land use. Placement is a profound change to one holds common expectation Caroline. As democratic consent, not broad consensus, major change takes.
Are your statements come? Thank you. All right, I I um can't do to what my colleagues do, I do wanna pass plan, which decades. Who formed the first to plan the second comprehensive. Um it formed it. They with one uh that this reinforced the first. And um so through those planning board members worked so and so deliberate. Um. I was like a board leader and to the planning board chaired by Chad Novelli, who was chair of the planning board. Um Bruce Murray was on that. Or um. Lois Lonsberry, but and it it worked, and I can tell you, they were deliberative and careful when they put the the town route um which we found delightful that the town asking us these questions we liked about the town of Caroline. So thank you to the, to those wonderful peers. Then the first they followed on the zoning commission task force, um the second, I can't uh prove upon the question that Michelle made, lived it. I so. With zoning commission. If if any of you have looked at the zoning commission, seen the two hundred and fifteen questions. That were not heard quickly or glib, but uh with research, with info, with thoughtfulness, no matter how the question was asked. Um those addressed respectfully and and carefully for education too. So, thank you to to the zoning. Um Jean is the chair who steered that committee so long and was always so upbeat. Um I a uh that's learning experience for me. Believe it or not, I've never written a zoning law, you know, so um you know, this has been a learning process. Uh people's thought along it is, but um if you really look at what it is. Of course, it has a big definition, thank goodness. It's got our current site re- the review embedded in it. It's gonna get some amount, but it's gonna take off the table too, and this things work in a much rational, but um uh active manner. Oh, um it's been a learning process and I really uh. I'm clean with where we're at this. Uh. If any of us me, then they know that I rethink things.
Sorry, I took it.
Uh but he knows you. And um that's that's a a character flaw.
Or strength.
And so um but I like um law is really good product that my colleagues have pointed out is uh the product of a lot of thoughtful um grappling with information and creative ways to make land use regulation for our wonderful country. And uh so, yeah, we live in a place, I was a place while doing this. We want this place be a wonderful place forever. Um and I know that there are some people that feel that this is the way to do that, but that's that's a policy decision, that's a policy. Um, um. Yeah, that's that's. Um, so uh I'm comfortable adopting now, um it's or most of you have been listed. Um, oh, that though we change as we want future and we can do that. I um I don't have to say that this is product, this, I think, product, it's it's a good and it's one that will serve serve well, so. Uh so I um I also wanna thank the who um has been fully engaged with this over the past three years. Um I got a couple of people that I adore or denote. And honestly, um we disagree, have always felt respect and worth in Caroline.
Be disagreeable.
Yeah, like so, uh a lot of wonderful people here, what they think about how you manage to do, so. Um, with that, um I'm ready to put this to a vote. So if um that's the case, I will do so, I'll do it by roll call, starting our right, Tim Murray.
Very happy to vote yes.
Kate Kelly McKenzie.
I vote yes.
Michelle Brown. Cal Snow. And myself, Mark Whitmer, yes. The uh town of Caroline zoning is hereby by a vote of one. Do everybody?
And it will, as soon as it's filed, it is then the law, I mean, as soon as.
Department of State, sorry, that's right. Um.
No, we did.
That'd make it work.
That's right.
Whatever it all go there to go to. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yeah. Um. Well, um. I'm now gonna offer and I I gave you a month, there's a version that came out that I, but Mike Brown gave me. And I get um I sent that mail and I I also velvet, so you could have. Great, so this is um the resolution in support of bringing clean energy education beach activities by the town of Caroline and part with the the version that offering here at the meeting where only recognizes the value awareness for clean energy measures in residence, energy use, trans renewable energy sources and lower expenses and whereas federal utility and local and entities are offering to adopt energy measures, therefore be it re town of Caroline supports raise of one or more clean energy engagement campaigns to be undertaken down and partners. Community campaigns may be limited to providing opportunities incentives for cleaning heating and cooling, these renewable energy from the electric vehicles. Aging with local partners such as corporate extension of Compton County and municipal partner partner local sustainability. That's the resolution, did I get that, I'll second. By Michelle. Any um. Anyway, this is like a Mike Brown E I initiative to get it on record that we are interested promoting these kinds of, so. Other thoughts or question?
Would would that egg thing be included, because that's kinda an insult.
Uh. Um, I I that's a question, I don't know, it would depend on it. Um, yeah. Would be, yes. Yeah, it might be counted towards part of the. Yeah. Well, I'll vote for for this resolution, all in favor?
Hi.
I oppose, great. I want to sneak in um the resolution not to renew funding the funding agreement with the for operation of the Brookendale.
Should John's name be in it or not?
I can put it in there if you.
I don't know. It doesn't, just, it's just the USGS in Portland.
I'll just leave it as it is, I don't see how I would work it in, great. Anyway, but.
He he was great.
Really?
He was.
Yeah, he's.
Just.
Really sharp.
Beyond sharp.
Yeah.
So.
So uh I won't read the resolution, because it's really the same record before, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so. Wait for me to uh bring. Offer that. Um, did I? No, I second it by ten. And all in. I. Great. For that. Now offer resolution to approve the vouchers for town.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kate and around my supervisor's region that I can't find, I turned it over and told that.
You're all worth a hundred.
Yeah. So A fund, thousand two hundred and seventy two dollars, N S D A fund, seventy six, seven hundred and eighty six dollars and thirty nine. And the street light, four hundred dollars, exactly. Is it, that never happened?
Just.
Yeah, so. Hi, Mr. Craig.
Can I? I have one thing in relationship vouchers. Um, I noticed substantial bills coming in from highway for redevelopment. But on it, it occurred to, I don't think we ever did a proposal for any kind of a budget proposal or estimate or anything, and I think it would be the stage to.
Anything and I think it would be the stage to. In some way or another because.
Some idea was going to be.
And also how the procurements are happening. I mean, are very, very large, put out to bid or they just bought by one company, you know. So I really think.
They're just, yeah, so they're just buying gold, it's from home central.
My question is, could we do? Is there a way to do better? I don't know, I mean, we don't, I don't get things, but it just occurred to me, and it builds it.
Yeah, I was wondering if there was a limit, a budget of some sort on this.
We're just, I mean, what comes to my mind is like kind of a compare like, you get, it's from, okay, we're gonna. Cubic cart. Concrete.
Mr. Cartlange, I mean, do we have of how much?
Well, I think we should.
We definitely should.
We have some, it slipped my mind.
But we don't have, I don't think, I haven't seen any numbers. Right, I haven't seen any, no, that this way of doing it is actually cheaper than that to somebody else.
Well, it is because of labor, I mean. Is Bob, is Bob still on it?
Great, um, no, it's a good point, we, what's going on is just sort of going.
There's been, gonna be spending here.
I'm gonna approve all of the March sixth, Jesse's not here.
Did anybody else, the fact that, um, funding for. The central New York area. Right in the current budget has been rolled back, but what that might need in the future. Other chips funding and things, I couldn't help but make up from school funding to. Way improvement.
I think there, this looks a different category, which doesn't mean it's not concerning at all, but. Named to me to about this. Hearing alarm of a decrease in chips or. Probably for more funds and.
Yeah, this was an A O T.
I didn't, I mean, they didn't.
Okay, okay, I heard about the school. Not good news.
So, um. It'll be okay if I called a brief to discuss. So I will offer a resolution for executive session to discuss. Employment matters. Thank second, or Tim. All in favor?
Okay.
Oppose? Hey Velvet. Voted to enter, and so I guess. You're off the microphone, I just, I can just shut the meat.
You shut the recording off.
Yeah, okay.